All right. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. Let's stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's remain standing for a moment of silence, please. See you. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice for this meeting was advertised in the record posted at the board office and filed with the city clerk. I hereby call to order the regular, nope, the special meeting on May 1st in the Hackensack Media Center at 5:31 PM. Nope, we're not in Hackensack Media Center, we're in the Board of Education Padavano Building. Ms. Singh, will you please do a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Bendesso is absent, Mr. Carroll is not here as yet. Mr. Coleman?
Present.
Ms. Cordero Alton?
Present.
Ms. Maury?
Present.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Ms. Somerville?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Mr. James Vickery?
Present.
We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Great, thank you. So we will start our presentation for our 2023-2024 budget. I just want to make everyone on the board aware and the public aware that it is the same, nothing has changed with, as far as the members are concerned. We are just, this is our second hearing.
Good evening. My name is Robert Sanchez and I am the Superintendent of Hackensack Public Schools. It is my pleasure to present to you the Hackensack Public Schools budget for the 2023-2024 school year. As you know, we are in the third year of our strategic planning initiative. The five goal areas depicted here lay the foundation on which this budget has been built. The goal areas are building, empowering, and engaging the community, state-of-the-art community-based schools, access to equity and inclusivity, educating the whole child, and creating lifelong learners. This budget is focused on providing our students with a high-quality education and school experience, all while being physically responsible to the taxpayer. At Hackensack Public Schools, we understand that achieving our goals requires collaboration between teachers, parents, students, and the broader community at large. We are committed to investing in our future while simultaneously instilling a love of lifelong learning and inquiry in an inclusive environment that values the diversity of our students and staff. Throughout the rest of the presentation, you will hear more about these initiatives.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Oates Parchman and I'm Assistant Superintendent of Schools. We are blessed to have dedicated staff who work relentlessly to serve our students with excellence. Everything that we do falls under the umbrella of culturally responsive teaching so that we serve all of our students with rigorous instruction. During the upcoming school year, we will focus our professional development on classroom application and progress monitoring. Some of our curriculum highlights include major revisions to our math curriculum and English Language Arts curriculum as a result of new standards being adopted by the New Jersey Department of Education. Staff will be involved in major curriculum revision work for the 2023-2024 school year. There will also be a comprehensive focus on science as revisions are made based on comprehensive mapping in which our teachers engaged in to make sure that students meet the expectations of all standards prior to the end of the school year. To highlight some of our professional learning planned for next year, we will continue year four of our district equity team professional learning, focused on building level implementation that includes delivering rigorous instruction in all subject areas so that our students benefit from quality instruction. Some examples of quality instruction will include the Science Department's focus on scientific modeling, argumentation with evidence, and scientific discourse moves. Not noted on this slide, but equally important is professional development to support math instruction in our elementary schools, middle school, and high school that focuses on building understanding of mathematical ideas through student discourse, meaning students discussing and talking about their thinking and being able to represent mathematical thinking in various ways.
This is Rosemary Marks, Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services, explaining how our budget will support social-emotional learning. We will have a school counselor and/or social worker continue to support students with classroom lessons on SCL competencies. Funds will also support workshops for staff and parents on the nurtured heart strategies, as well as registrations for teachers to attend mindfulness, SCL, or yoga certification training. Funds have also been allocated to support SCL activities for students and staff, including a contract with Care Plus for clinicians at Hackensack Middle School and Hackensack High School, as well as funds to continue to support Kindness Week, student assemblies, and to provide for mindfulness resources district-wide.
Hi, my name is Lauren Tasmarts and I am the Director of Pre-School. I also work closely with the district's preschool program. This year, the district will offer 148 in-district spots for four-year-olds and an additional 30 spots at its partnering private provider. We are expanding our full-day preschool program and for the first time, offering 60 spots for three-year-olds at a new private provider location that is predicted to open in 2022. We currently serve approximately 60% of our four-year-old preschool population and approximately 19% of our three-year-old population.
Good evening. This is Darius Pemberton, Director of Special Services. Our extended school year program from grades pre-K to grade four will be at Jackson Avenue School. Students will be able to continue their individual educational programs as well as structured play opportunities. Grades five through 12 will either attend at the Hackensack Middle School or Hackensack High School, where students will continue with their structured learning experiences, job sampling, and community-based instruction depending on their program. Intensive reading and/or math interventions will be provided for the students that require the additional support. This year, I am happy to announce that we will be celebrating Special Education Week from May 15th to May 19th. As you can see in this slide, there will be activities during that week that supports our inclusive environment. On Monday, feel free to rock your Rise t-shirts. On Tuesday, we will be celebrating the Rise program again by enjoying some of their top-shelf cookies. Wednesday will be our Day of Inclusion, followed by a Thankful Thursday for all of our staff members, and then on Friday, we will all celebrate by rocking our Blue and Gold.
Hi, this is Adrian Sapiro, District Analysis Coordinator. For the upcoming school year, we will be focusing on improving our cybersecurity defenses, infrastructure, and physical security to meet the ever-growing needs of our classrooms and ensure the safety and security of our school community. We will also be providing additional support for the educational technology tools our schools have at their disposal, providing on-demand professional development opportunities as well as coaching. Lastly, obsolete technology in classrooms will continue to be refreshed to ensure schools have updated resources to best support teaching and learning. Thank you.
It is always important to protect our investment by ensuring that we maintain our facilities. Here are a few examples of building maintenance projects that will make our buildings safer and enhance our appearance. Some maintenance projects include ballistic glazing at multiple locations, roof replacements, playground paving, floor and exterior door replacements, and waterproofing, just to name a few. As many of you know, there is only one gym at Hackensack Middle School for approximately 1,500 students. The lack of adequate instructional spaces for physical education classes has been a challenge to the school for many years and has negatively impacted the efficiency of the school schedule for the entire building. To alleviate the overcrowding and scheduling concerns, this budget includes the installation of an athletic bubble that will provide a safe, climate-controlled space for our students to learn and play during and after regular school hours. The safety and security of our students and staff is paramount to everything we do. This is why this budget includes the creation of a security vestibule at Nellie K. Parker School. Security vestibules provide school staff with the ability to control visitor access to the interior of the school, thus providing a greater level of security and comfort for students and staff alike. And we would also like to mention that many other capital projects are happening next school year throughout the district, which limited to no impact to the taxpayer as they are being funded via either ESIP or ESER grant funds. Some of these projects include new air conditioning at Hillers, Fairmont School, Hackensack Middle, and Hackensack High School. Our goal is for classrooms throughout the district to have air conditioning for the 2024-2025 school year. It is truly an exciting time to be at Hackensack Public Schools.
Good evening. I am Lydia Singh, the district's School Business Administrator. Once again, it is my pleasure to present to you the 2023-2024 school budget for the Hackensack Board of Education. Hackensack Public Schools continues to challenge all students to excel. In alignment with the district's mission statement, we strive to ensure that the 2023-2024 school budget utilizes our available resources to maximize the benefits for all of our students. The fundamentals of a balanced budget requires that our expenditure match the amount of cash we receive. Appropriations equal revenues. Now let us examine our sources of revenues. Our primary sources of revenues are tax levy, state and extraordinary aid, tuition, and special revenues or grants. Grants can only be used for specific purposes and are not part of the operating budget. So now let us look at the main items affecting the 2023-2024 budget. Tax levy, which I will address in later slides, was increased by 2%. State and extraordinary aid only went up by 1.4%, or 538,972, as compared to over 7 million in prior year. Tuition and miscellaneous revenue also decreased, and this is because Maywood is no longer a sending district or a source of revenue for us. This chart is a visual depiction of the various sources of revenues, which totals to 155,104,831. The other part of the equation is the appropriations. It was quite a challenge to balance this budget because we had a 15% increase in healthcare costs, in addition to negotiated increases in salaries without the corresponding increase in revenues. These are expenses which are predetermined for a district. But as you can see in this slide, the reductions are mostly from administration, while there are increases in maintenance of facilities and instruction. This is important for the health, safety, and the education of our children. Salaries and benefits comprise almost 61% of our budget. However, the major portion is strictly instructional. This slide shows the maximum taxes allowable for the 2023-2024 school year. It is calculated using available bank cap, the 2% tax levy adjustment on a 2022-2023 base year, which equates to the total of 93,532,329,053. However, instead, the tax levy for 2023-2024 school year is just 89,151,864,329,053,053. This is prior year's comparison to the 2023-2024 tax levy. For the past four years, it was below the allowable 2%. It also shows how bank cap has accumulated over these years. The point is that as much as possible, the school district has been conservative by not maximizing taxes. This year, due to increase in costs together with a reduction in revenues, we were compelled to use a minimum of 2%. Bank cap arises because less than 2% tax has been levied over the recent years. The difference accumulates and can be used in the subsequent three years. Also, due to increased healthcare costs, we are allowed additional bank cap. The amount available for use in 2024, 2025, and subsequent school years School tax levy impact per average household is $176.08, which is $14.67 per month. The school tax rates for $100 of assessed valuation over the past six years shows how hard the district has tried to contain increases over the years. In conclusion, thank you to all my staff for their diligence and continued support.
All right. Be it resolved that the Hackensack Board of Education determines it not necessary to be in executive session on Monday, May 1st, 2023, and we will move on to our public comments. All participants must sign in. When it is your turn, please state the following: your name, your municipality, any group affiliation that might be important to us. For example, union membership, family membership, if you're an employee member of a, not family membership, family member if you're a trustee. If you are employed by the district, et cetera, each member has a limit of three minutes. Please direct all comments to me as the presiding officer, and all responses will be held to the end if there is going to be a response. First up.
I suppose that's me. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and sit sort of sideways so I can manage my time here. So forgive. Okay, so Cassine Gaines, Hackensack. I did have a question that I'm hoping, oh, thank you. I did have a question that I'm hoping can be answered. I didn't really quite understand it when I was watching at home, and I'm hoping, I watched it a second time, but I get a little bit more, but I'm hoping that Ms. Singh can explain the bank cap and how that works exactly. I get that it rolls over, but I'm trying to figure out if that means that if the bank cap wasn't there, that we would have gone even further, that we would have got over 2%, or is the 2% with the bank cap factored in? I don't want to, I'm gonna go through my time, but if you want to hold on to that. I also did want to speak, not on the budget, but I wanted to speak on the last meeting, particularly because as I was at home, not even here, in my pajamas, I got a text message from someone as I was trying to follow. There was a lot going on, lots of paper shifting and things like that, so I was trying to follow. And someone said, "You realize the board president is referencing you, right?" And I missed it, actually. I didn't know exactly what was happening. But I went back to the meeting, and certainly, there was a pretty direct reference to me and my comments of the January meeting where I took issue with the fact that there was not any female representation in the board leadership. And that was characterized as being divisive, trying to sow division. There were suggestions made that I was a part of some secret political group. And really, I guess what I was curious about is, I'll direct it to Mr. Vickery, but I think it's really a question for the lawyers. I don't really know how that's appropriate for a staff member to be directly referenced, to have an allegation made about a staff member. And I don't know how I'm supposed to feel confident that whatever the suggestion is as to, I suppose my activities outside of the hours of 8 to 3 is being brought into this meeting by the board president during a portion of the meeting that's being stated as factual information, not an opinion, but just factual information was said over and over again during that section. So personally, I don't know how I'm supposed to take that. I don't know how I'm supposed to take that there seems to be some sort of feeling or sentiment that that somehow there is division being sown because I think that the board should represent the staff and have gender diversity.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Somebody online? All right, so we will move on to our resolution, which is simply one. So we have a resolution to approve and adopt the 2023-2024 school year budget. So can I have a motion to approve our budget for the 2023-2024 school year? Mr. Powell?
Awesome.
Ms. Rodriguez, maybe the second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bendesso is absent. Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Cordero Alton?
Yes.
Ms. Maury?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Somerville?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. James Vickery?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, board comments. Ms. Maury?
Good evening, everyone. So I wanted to wish good luck to our students for taking the NJSLA. Just, you know, as you're taking these tests, it's so important to answer every question. If you have extra time, look over your answers. This is what, maybe my 14th year, 15th year, administering the state test, and you always see those kids that fly right by, they have a whole hour, and they finish their test in 20 minutes, and, you know, it drives me crazy. I'm like, look over it again. I was like, you cannot turn this thing in. So please, please look over your stuff. I mean, these tests are not the end-all, be-all. It's not going to determine who you're going to be as you grow up, but it is still important to do your best, always do your best. Also, get a good night's rest, make sure you charge your Chromebooks. Again, a lot of those issues arise happen today. So best of luck, teachers and students, stay strong for this week. We'll finish these tests as soon as possible. I also wanted to thank people who reached out to me after last week's meeting. My two board members who reached out to me out of the eight. Thank you so much for reaching out for my well-being. I know that I did nothing wrong. So for me to reiterate everything that happened last week, it's not really necessary. However, the board does need to focus on the business of the district. Board leadership should be respectful. Should be respectful of the fact that we are all equal board members who have the right to question, who all have a responsibility to the district. I shouldn't be accused of being political for caring about my district and caring about the students. I won't go back into detail of what happened last week. But thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
You did another one great budget presentation from the administrative team. I like the colors still, Adrian. I like them. It's nice and colorful. You know, it's not boring, you know, it was very informative. So thank you for the way you are, you're, you know, very creative, effective. Good initiative, thank you. And like Jen said, good luck with the kids, with your exams. Wish you all the best. I'm sure you all do well. I saw the vestibule on it, NKP, HMS, the bubble. Those are great things that are coming. It's, the last meeting, I was a little confused on a couple of things. So I'm gonna ask a couple of pointed questions, if you don't mind. I like clarity before I can speak to anything, so I'm not sure of something someone asked one or two questions, if you don't mind. Ms. Singh, I think this one's for you, if you don't mind. The threshold, are we over our, if you correctly, our 120%? Are we over or not? I kind of want to get some clarity on that. And before you answer, did Ms. Maury's query to be attorney, did that drive us over our threshold? Can you answer, please?
So, Mr. Powell, I am going to address this from a factual budgeting standpoint, not addressing anything else, because that's all I can speak to.
Okay.
So what I'm reading here is actually as a result of the budget, of the calculations that were, they're the facts, okay? It's based on what's there. So the 2022-23 per pupil legal cost revised as of February 1st, 2023, exceeded 130% of the state average per pupil legal costs. So this, this requirement is restated. I imposed that in your package for your, for your reading, you know, you can read parts of it. NJAC is 6A, 23A, dash 225A addresses this. If a district goes over 130% of the state average, we are required to take measures to reduce the costs. And as of this date, we were already over. And that's based on what's in CSI, what we spent and what was input in the budget. Does that answer your question, sir?
So we are, we are already over?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, you didn't think it. So let me just wrap up then. That was important for me to know. Because, you know, I'm a taxpayer too, I'm not just a poor man. So I just need to know where we are, where we can do better. And back again, based on the last meeting. I can speak for myself personally. I think it's I think Ms. Maury was humiliated. And I think, like she said earlier, we're all equals. We're not appointed, we're all elected people. We're all equal. I think the last meeting we had, when we spoke in the executive session, I think it was out and said, let's try to keep things a certain way. And when we go out, we should, you know, you could correct me, on the negative front. But when we, when we went out there, everything kind of went south. I just think, I'm not here to blame anyone. I just think going forward, we should not try to humiliate each other at all. We are entitled to our opinions. Everyone of the board is valid. That's why we're here. We're not puppets, not robots. And I just think dressing down someone like that in public was just, for me again, was distasteful. I would never have done something like that. I think if a board member does something wrong, there are ways we can address it. And I think the lawyer told us you could file an ethics complaint if you think it's, it's warranted. But just to public shame someone and humiliate someone, I don't think that's what we should do. I don't think that's what this board represents. I've been around the board for quite some time. Even before I got on the board, like I said, I attend many meetings and I've never ever seen anything like this. So it was disturbing for me. I can't speak for you all. But I think going forward, we should try to find a better way to handle things like this and not try to disgrace our fellow board members. The public is watching. I, I don't know if you're aware of it, maybe you are. Many people have reached out that they, they just found it distasteful. I just think we have to do a better job of that going forward. And we have to do things right, or we have to try to do things right. And another piece of it that I didn't like, and I'm just gonna speak from my heart, and then I'm gonna done. We said, I think it was brought to our attention that we were gonna address an email, or read an email in. So if you're gonna read an email, just read the email. But we can't read an email and be a judge and a jury at the same time. You could correct me, but I think that was wrong. Just read it and read it into the public or let the attorney read it. But to read it and pick it apart bit by bit, I think that was, this is not what we're here for. And again, as board members, we have three duties. To pick a superintendent, out budget. We make sure we adhere to the policies of the district and the states. We have to go back to remember that what we're here for is limited to what we can do. We are limited, and I just use that word again, we're limited in what we can do. We can't say, just get there and change things. I said, oh, policy. I get it, I get it. It doesn't work that way. Our school district is governed by associations and there's just many things that we have to be mindful of. And Mr. Gaines, thank you for coming. Thank you for speaking. And your concern that you, you were addressed and you, you took issue with it. And as you ought to. And we are, again, as a board, we have to be very careful that when we speak about, and I've said this over and over and over again, and I'm gonna say it again. When it comes to personnel, when it comes to district employees, you have to be careful. You just can't go out there and address people and speak about them like that. There, it's wrong. And I've said it over and over and over again, and I'm gonna say it to you again. We're not perfect, but let's learn from this. That's not something that we should be doing as a board. And I hope we can move away from that, because there's consequences for it. We can't do it. So if we're not sure before we discuss anyone, let's speak to our board attorney. And that's why they're here, to keep us in check and keep us away from litigation. But we just have to be mindful of it and we have to do a better job. Thank you all for coming today. Short notice, I'm here, gotta go to work, but I had to come to vote. And it's good to see you guys again. Thank you for the service you do. And I hope, like Jen said, we can move forward and do the business of the kids. But I think we're a little distracted with some things. And again, if we're not sure what we're here to do, call Matt Lee, speak to the attorney. We have to remember what our job, it's our title is. That's it. I think we have kind of lost track of what we can do and what we can't do. And it's very dangerous when we wade into territories or water where we're not supposed to. It's, there's consequences for it, serious consequences. So we should, and we don't know X. Ask someone who does know, because it's, you know, I, I don't, what Mr. Gaines just said should never have happened. It should not happen to anybody at all. So we have to be very careful. Can we do better? Yes, yeah. Can I do better? We all can. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Can, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Mrs. Sanchez, Lydia, good job on the presentation. I know, believe me, that it's hard about this budget, especially one as hefty and organized and having to make cuts. Especially when we don't get funded as we expected, right? It's a really hard thing. So, you know, thank you for being judicious and, you know, actually making the cuts where they're important, right? And keeping where we need to be focused on that. And that's on the district and on the students, because of that. Jen, again, like I told you last week, you know, I'm sorry, right? I'm sorry. I can see you're still hurt. You almost look like you're in tears and it's breaking my heart over you. I feel like I should be crying on your behalf. So I, I, I'm so sorry that your feelings were hurt. And don't think that anyone in this room, or again, I'm gonna fall back to speak for myself. I am never for the politics of, you know, personal destruction. I do not say things unless it's based in fact, right? I don't go out there, I don't make accusations, I don't make innuendos. Again, I'm not saying Scott made, and, you know, President Vickery made an accusation or innuendo. But if you took it that way, then your feelings are valid, right? Because again, it's how you take something, it's not necessarily how something was meant to be conveyed. So, you know, from me to you, if by any means you felt it was, you know, what was said was a reflection of my feelings toward you, it is not under any circumstances whatsoever, right? So I just want to think that perfectly. The second part is on Adrian, not even a question, it's just curiosity, right? We said new technologies and stuff are coming for 2023, 2024. I know that is a big thing out there, right? About AI and ChatGPT and all of those programs. As a school, are we looking at anything based on that or our technology forward? Just curiosity.
I mean, AI is, is still developing and there's still a lot of bias. And really, from a policy perspective, the only things we're doing with AI right now is hopefully educating students on when to use it, how to use it, you know, to ensure that they understand how it works, because there's still a lot of struggle to even educate staff and students on how even Google works. And, you know, AI is essentially Google on steroids. So the, the potential for misinformation and, and just, you know, as I mentioned earlier, bias really overrules everything else right now. A lot of products are embedding ChatGPT into it. So I think that that's something to be cautious about. We have to make sure that we understand those tools and how they may impact other areas. But that's as far as we're going with chat with AI at this point. Aside from any tools that integrated for analysis or analytics, you know, things like that. Those, in those areas, I think you're safer than when it's content generating. That's when it's a little more problematic.
Okay, thanks. Just, I was just curious if that was part of the technology package that we rolled out for next year. At the end, again, I just, oh, and for the lawyer, actually received two phone calls, right? Guys, I am not listed for a reason. Don't need to get phone calls, but two phone calls came and somebody asked me a question. They not identified themselves, just said, I got my phone number. They're curious about whether or not the, the policy for only for calling the lawyer, right? Because I think it was mentioned during the, the back and forth that calling the attorneys may have pushed those, our payment costs. And it was asked, one, is that accurate? Which, again, I, I don't know. I guess we get that maybe a question to you, so whether or not calls from board members.
I, I'm right there already. I just, I'm just, I just, this, this thing, this is. The order that I read, from this time.
Okay. And then to ask, what is the process? Because I think somewhere, Scott, it was mentioned that to call you and then you would reference the, to call the attorney with a question? Like, that's the, the direction?
So the process is, it's, it has to be in writing. So the way that, that it's worked out in our district, so if you are a board member, in writing to the president, whoever that is at the time, and copying Lydia. And then those two people will make sure that there is not a resource available to us, that it's not simply a policy thing that we can find so that we don't have to call upon the lawyers unneeded. If it is a staff person, special services, technology, whatever, that's a, that, they will go in writing to Mr. Sanchez, copying Lydia, same situation. They'll research to make sure we don't have something available to us before we contact the attorneys. And then the president and Mr. Sanchez are required to keep a record throughout the month. And then that way, we have to turn those over to Lydia, Miss Singh, so that then she can cross-reference with bills at the end of the month to make sure.
Okay, so that's the policy?
That's the policy that's been here for a long time.
That was asked, not aware of it, right? So again, I know from what we have discussed in executive session about how we're gonna follow. Not sure if it was a policy or a protocol. So that's what was asked of me and I honestly could not answer.
It's not a bitch, oh, one, seven, four.
Okay, thank you. So you can read that when you say it's policy, oh, one, seven, four. And whomever, you know, the person is that wanted to know, can look at them, look it up themselves online just to make sure that they have the accurate information, right? Because again, I wasn't aware of it, so I couldn't speak. And to see, again, as always, thank you for coming out. Honestly, not quite sure what you're referencing. But again, like I said, right, people are entitled to their opinions. And when something is said, if, if you feel aggrieved and that is a conversation to be had, then, I mean, I'm presuming Mr. Sanchez is your resource, right? So I would suggest you schedule some time with Mr. Sanchez to have the conversation kind of air, you know, where you're at and what you think, you know, was said and referencing. And then I'm sure somewhere along the line, you know, as the overseer of the district, he'll be able to deal with it and, you know, bring in anybody else that you think may need to be a larger part of the conversation, right? But again, from the board, from me to you, you know, sorry, you're feeling that way. And honestly, I'm really truly not aware of it. So I missed that whole reference to you specifically in the conversation that was had last Monday. All right, and from me to everybody else, get home safely. Have a good evening, everybody, and thank you.
All right, Mr. Carroll?
Good evening, everyone. Saying, good job on the budget presentation. It was a lot of work. I'm gonna be real brief. To the teachers and staff, we're almost there. It's almost June. Just hang in there. The board, we're, we're doing big things. So just stand, stand by us and we will stand by you. Again, just hang in there. Good night.
Hi. All right. So I actually wasn't gonna say anything other than Mr. Sanchez, Lydia, and to all the administration, Adrian, Mrs. Parchment, who put this presentation together and worked effortlessly to really come in and, and answer all the questions that were needed with regards to the budget. I think you all did an amazing job. I'm grateful. And I apologize in advance if there are questions that I might ask or ask again, because you very patiently explained it to me and I eventually get it. I would just like to reference one thing since Trustee Powell so graciously used my name as a reference in a comment that he made here. I would just like to say that it is not in context with regards to what was actually discussed at the public session. So I would greatly appreciate if everyone keeps that in mind. Yes, I did make that statement, but it was an executive session with regards to an item that was not requested to be brought into public session in that evening. So context matters. And I just wanted to clarify that. Otherwise, Scott, I would just like to say, President Scott James Vickery, I appreciate you. And I think that last week's presentation went well. And I absolutely supported the decision to read the email in public. And if anybody would like to have that discussion offline with me, everybody has my phone number. It is available and we can have that conversation. I would expect that if Trustee Maury took issue with it, she would address me personally. She also has my son, so she'd be more than welcome. And then we can have that discussion on private. Thank you.
Mr. Coleman? I was planning on saying no comment, but it was a very nice presentation. Thank you for that. And I join with what Seth said, context matters. And my impression of whatever happened at the meeting last was simply an attempt to put things into context. And I think it was accurate. So thank you. That's all I have. Mr. Rodriguez?
We can, yes, thank you. Once again, Lydia, I can't say enough. I know how tough, how hard you worked. We had several meetings, you know, usually years prior, we kind of got spoiled and lucky that we've had more money than we received this year. So her job was, you know, so much difficult this year because we do have a lot of goals, a lot of projects going on, a lot of things that we want to accomplish. So it wasn't easy to get to the bottom line that she did, quite our staff. So thank you for the hard work, you and your staff, Mrs. Sanchez. Thank you, guys. I know how hard you worked on that. I just want to keep it simple. I'm tired. I wanna wish the kids luck. I know my daughter's studying now for the test and, you know, I think that wanna kind of follow Ms. Trustee Maury said, like, a lot of the kids get stressed out and they get anxious about it. Do the best you can, be prepared. Get a good night's rest. Have a good breakfast and, and you'll get to it. Other than that, guys, thank you for coming out and we'll get home safe. Thank you.
Thank you. So let me first. First, I'm gonna clarify, my last name is James Vickery. For anybody that doesn't quite get that. And, and I say that because it's important to me. Trustee Maury, you, you made reference to about welcoming questions. That is one thing that I do welcome, is questions anytime. And, and that you want people to care about children. That's all I've begged of people to care about children at this table. So I, I hope that you will join me in that effort is to get folks to care about children. Because all that, that, all that you brought to this table was not caring about children. Mr. Powell? I absolutely agree we are all equal at this table. If there is something that you believed was meant that was humiliating, I, I'm not quite sure where that is. Because nothing that was said was demeaning or taken out of context. The reason it was important is because an email was sent announcing his resignation. And then a, a secondary email was sent that had a lot of mistruths in it. And a lot of facts that were wrong. That was the fact, that, that would have been the final public record. We are obligated to make sure that the public record is correct. We are obligated to make sure that the public record is correct. And that is, the only attempt was to clear up the public record, and that's, that was why I did it. You know, everybody wants transparency until it's about them. And so I ask. You specifically, Miss Maori, talk about transparency a lot. And I've never been able to pinpoint what we're talking about, what, what is so not transparent? Because the only things that we don't talk about are the things that we're not allowed to talk about. I have tried to get this board to engage, to talk to one another publicly, and it's like pulling teeth. I want us to engage so that the public can understand what. Like, how the sausage is made. I wa- I have said this to most of you, I, my dream is for them, for, an idea to come forward from this table, for them to see. From the tree, from the idea to it going into effect into our school district, all happening in public. That's the way it's supposed to happen. But I want, if, if we wanna talk about transparency, then I want to understand the transparency behind your decision. So either you're not being transparent, that you did not look at every legal memo that we have had since you've been on this board. Or you're ti- you're not being transparent about the timing, you, you chose to bring it, this topic up. It makes zero sense. Mr. Gaines, I have no idea what you're talking about, when it comes to, like, you're actually, I never mentioned your name. I, I, I mean, if you have some feeling that I was talking about you. I, I can't really, I mean, that, I, I can't really speak to that. It's not a back and forth, I can't speak to that, that.
If you wanna know, I can clarify, but if you choose not to know, but it's also fine.
I would, I was speaking.
I'm just.
To the politics of Hackensack.
I, no, no, there was.
This is not a back and forth.
To something that I said, there was a reference to something that I said. So I can read your words back to you and clarify for you, since you seem to be confused.
Oh, I'm not confused, okay.
Okay.
Not a back and forth. I understand exactly what I said.
Oh, okay.
If you have some affiliation that, that's on you, I'm speaking to the politics of Hackensack that I do not want in this room. All I want in this room is for us to be dealing with the children of this town. That's all I care about, that's all I've wanted from day one. I constantly remind the people in this room, how does this affect children? And for some reason, this kinda stuff continually takes our eyes off the prize, and the prize is our children. Now, the way that we can support our children and, 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 and. It's supporting our children, we support our teachers and our administrators and the rest of our staff. And that's what we want to do, or I want to do. But this kinda stuff is what gets in our way, non-stop, and it makes zero sense to me. So to me, it feels like a big game that somebody's playing, and I don't know why. Because all I wanna do is take care of children. Because every time we come in here, it is this stuff. And I don't get it, and, and maybe someone can explain it to me. Because it does not have to be this way. It just doesn't, this is a choice that people are making to bring it here. Now, I'm sure that I'll get all the, that I'm chastising, this is not meant to chastise anybody. This is meant for people to understand, it doesn't have to be this way. We can come and do the work on behalf of children and actually enjoy it. We can see awesome things happen and like each other, thank you. We can like each other and enjoy getting it done. It doesn't have to be miserable. It doesn't have to be antagonistic. I want to work on behalf of children. If you would like to join me, I'll be here at least once a month at the board, uh, at the board office, the committee meetings, I'll be here at the media center. Please, let's figure this out. We can leave politics at the door, we have got to get out of the campaign mindset. Once the campaign is over, we are aboard. It's done. We have a board meeting May twenty-second, committee meetings are. I guess next week, May fifteenth and then the twenty-second. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Before we adjourn, one correction, I think may, I may have said, um, Vickery, so if I did, my apologies, no, I think I.
It happens all the time, but I have a very, if you ever would like to hear the story of why my last name is Jen Sicker, I would love to share it, it's very important to me why my last name is Jen Sicker.
My apologies.
No, not, that was not directed at you. Yes, all those if I ever say I.
I, I didn't think so, Scott, I was just correcting.
Yes, thank you. Nope, no worries.